Today is Monday, November 7th, 2016. I'd like to call this meeting in order. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It's 7:37. I'd ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you call the roll.
Wagner, absent.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Anquist, absent. Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. We are in session. On to Agenda Item 3, Receipt of Written Communications from the Public. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit? If so, please raise your hand. Anyone with any written communication. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 4, Public Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that you address all your comments to the dais. Out of respect for the work that we have to get done here this evening, out of respect for other folks that may want to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over your three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. When your name is called, I ask that you go over to the microphone right next to Chief Ruth there, state your name for the record as we are recording this. And Clerk Spencer, has anybody signed up for public forum at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, the microphone behind Chief, or next to Chief Ruth, right there, if you could. And please state your name, and then...
Okay, Shelley Moscow. I just wanted to update you on the pumpkin collection for composting that we had on Saturday. We had the third annual one this past Saturday down at the Public Works. And there was over 30 locations throughout the four county areas, DuPage, Kane, Henry, and Lake County that participated. In DuPage County, we had 17 locations, and that was of 15 towns. We don't have the numbers back since it was just on Saturday. Republic picked up all the pumpkins, and they'll take them down to be composted. But last year, they had 26.5 tons of pumpkins that were recycled for composting in DuPage County. I worked the location, and we had 109 cars come through, which was an increase over the last three years. I think the first year was like 45 cars and around 75 to 80 last year, so it's going up. The only thing is, it's kind of a hard location. I mean, not a lot of people know where the Public Works office is, facility down there. So I think it would be good to have something more centrally located in town, and I think we'd get more people to attend. Some people said they had a hard time with their GPS finding the location as well. But otherwise, overall, it was really a good response from the residents. They brought their kids. They got to throw the pumpkins into the, roll off and smash them in there. We had some compost available, so they could see the, you know, the end product of what these pumpkins that are 90 percent water. Instead of having to go into the landfill and create methane gas, they were able to see what happens when they're composted and made into nutrient-rich soil that they can use in their garden. So like 30 to 40 percent of organic waste is going into our landfills. So that's what we're trying to educate the community about. We had six volunteers from York High School. It was the ultimate frisbee team that came and helped, and they were a great help at, you know, picking up, getting the pumpkins from the cars and assisting the kids and throwing them into the bin. We did pass out flyers. I had some little cards that I, talking about the composting that I took out to the Abbey and some of the locations that were selling pumpkins, the facility up on York and Grand. And so they passed them out to people that purchased pumpkins. And then we had a little flyer telling about why we're composting that we passed out on Saturday. And then the flip side talks about the cooking oil collection that will be the fourth year that will be participating in that, and that will be again at the Public Works on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So talking about, you know, recycling the cooking oil into diesel biofuel. Okay. And I have flyers that I could leave behind, and we could, you know, set them downstairs, so letting people know again about the cooking oil collection. Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. I'm publicly going to ask the mayor to do something. I would ask him in the future, when there's gatherings in his council chamber, that he not request the people to leave. This mayor, this council, works for the people. It's not your private business. Money you spend belongs to the residents. And to ask them to leave, why? The votes you take have an effect on them. Why shouldn't they be here to hear your arguments and your wishes of why? What's on the agenda should be passed. Council members, mayors, go to the city and say, "Sign my petition so I can run." They go to their people and say, "Vote for me." Let alone when they come to this chamber and they're asked to leave. They in fact own this building. Is it too much to ask, have them stay, to hear your reasons why you take a certain stand, why you take a certain vote? Aldermen tell me, well, people come up to them and say, "We would like to have this, and we would like to have that." Most of the time, there's nobody here. When do they get a hold of you? So in the future, I'm asking the mayor, I'm asking the alderman, to ask him, that when we do have public here, that they not be asked to leave, that they can see their government in action, for all of you asked them to put you up there. And then they can see the things that happen here. Suspended rules, no bid contracts. But until you allow them to stay, they're depending on what? Calling you? So let's change your whole attitude. Welcome. The people that put you in office, put him in office, are welcome to this place. Not chased away, not asked to leave because of the importance of the business that has to take place here.
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments.
Yes, sir. Ultimately, those votes, those opinions, will affect them, and they'll have to pay for those decisions.
John McNichols, 185 East Fremont.
My name is John McNichols, and I'm here tonight to express my opposition to a case, Case 16P-12, which will be heard by the Zoning and Planning Committee on Thursday night, the 10th. This case is over requested map amendments for expansion of the Elmhurst Extended Care Center on Lake Street. My neighbors and I have all opposed this expansion and the map amendments requested for many reasons. We'll get a chance on Thursday night, of course, to share our opposition with the Zoning and Planning Committee. But I felt it was important to come here tonight and let you know that you will ultimately have a chance to hear the merits of this case. And I wanted you to know that basically everybody in our neighborhood along Fremont Avenue, Elm, sorry, Kennelworth, and Grantley, and so on, we all oppose for some very important reasons, a few of which include that the look and feel of the neighborhood will be drastically altered by any, you know, map amendments, any expansion of commercial properties or institutional facilities into our cul-de-sac dead-end street. We feel that any financial hardship of the business that's requested, the map amendments is of their own making. All of the conditions that exist now existed when they bought the properties in question. We feel that density in our neighborhood would be negatively affected, that traffic on this cul-de-sac street would in fact be double what the estimates that the petitioners have estimated, because there's only one way out of our neighborhood. And we feel that property values would drastically decrease. This is not just an issue that affects my property, which is immediately adjacent to this property in question, but we feel it's an issue for all of Elmhurst, that if this can happen in our neighborhood, it can basically happen in any neighborhood for any of the residents of Elmhurst. We feel that if property values go down on our street, that property values by comparison for real estate purposes, for appraisal purposes, will go down in all of Elmhurst. And that to benefit a business by adjoining commercial properties and residential properties, and then perhaps rezoning them or amending the map for this purposes, would set a dangerous precedent of putting businesses ahead of what Elmhurst, I think, is ultimately all about, and that's, you know, great neighborhoods for great families. We all need services, and I hope to someday be lucky enough to live long enough to be in a residential facility like this. But I also feel that it doesn't belong in an R2 lot, and that any expansion into a residential neighborhood would be unnecessary and would be in fact bad for Elmhurst. So you'll get a chance to hear more about 16P-12 down the road. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope that when the time comes, you'll keep all of these things in mind when you get a chance to ultimately decide. Thank you.
That is all who signed in for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's it for public forum. For those who have signed in on our sign-up sheet, is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity earlier in the night to sign in on our sign-in sheet that wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand, so I can see how many people we have. Seeing none, that concludes our public forum for the evening. On to Agenda Item 5, Announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Clerk Spencer?
Yes. It's voting tomorrow, finally. The November 8th general election is tomorrow. Polls will open at 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. If anyone does not know their polling place, you may call the DuPage Election Commission at (630) 407-5600. Early voting for Elmhurst location ended Saturday, November 5th, and I was told on Friday, it was well over 5,000 people that had come to early vote, so...
Here in, here at City Hall?
Here at City Hall. So that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements from the dais? Alderman Sabatino.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Deuter and I will be hosting a First Ward Town Hall meeting on Thursday, November 17th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Elmhurst Public Library. The meeting will also provide an opportunity to meet the city's new fire chief, Tom Freeman. All are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Great. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Before we get started, I will note for council that there was a clerical error. Item 6.16 doesn't exist, does not belong on the agenda. So I, as chairman, am removing Agenda Item 6.16 at this time. Noting that, is there anyone else in the audience? Not the audience, I appreciate the audience participation, but I'm not asking them for input on this. Is there anybody else on the dais who wants to have anything pulled from the consent agenda to vote no or provide further comment at this time? Alderman Bram?
6.8.
6.8, okay. Any other items to pull from consent agenda? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus Items 6.8 and the previously noted 6.16. Motion to approve consent agenda, motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. Clerk Spencer?
Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Anquist, absent. Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda, consent agenda is approved, minus Item 6.8 and 6.16. On to Agenda Item 6.8. This is a report out of Public Affairs and Safety. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
6.18, is that?
6.8.
Oh, 6.8. I'm sorry. I thought it was 18.
How come I can't find it? Oh, I got it. She needs it. She got it?
Yes, I have it. It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the city council approve the installation of the traffic control signage at the Marion Street, Kenmore Avenue, and Marion Street, Longdale Avenue intersections, as recommended above. The committee recommends the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval, signed by Chris Healy, Chairman, Danny Palmsky, Vice Chairman, Norm Leader.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll entertain a motion to approve. The report and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Healy, second by Alderman Palmsky. Alderman Healy, this is a report out of your committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Honestly, pretty cut-and-dried stop sign request. Committee agreed with traffic consultant. Both aldermen from the Fourth Ward were in favor of it. The tree trimming that was mentioned, the report has already been done. Pretty standard.
Additional comment? Alderman Bram, you pulled this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As in the past, I always take a deep look at any type of traffic control device request. In this one, I have some concerns, and I'll outline those concerns now. The concern here is that, as we've talked about and discussed in the past, that we use the MUTCD, the Manual Uniform of Traffic Control Devices standard, to evaluate when a stop sign or when a traffic control device is needed. This removes, you know, any decisions being anything from a need from a residential or residents making a request, an alderman making a request. It's utilizing a document that has been put together from a federal level, has been adopted from a state level, and has been adopted by the city of Elmhurst, so we're looking at specific criteria. Over the past approximate 10 years, we have been referencing what I would reference, and it's referenced in the report, or maybe not in the report, but the document that was utilized for the committee discussion, of the box criteria. The box is a gentleman who wrote a report or an article that I believe, and I don't quote me on this, but I believe it was done in 1997, this article, that the city has been utilizing and utilizing in the past up until today for definition of site triangles, so line of sight issues. Well, my concern is this. Now this recommendation, this criteria references the report not only for line of sight concerns or site triangles as they are referred to, but now superseding what the MUTCD states is traffic accident criteria for a stop sign request. One of these intersections meets MUTCD criteria, the other does not. It is supposed to be three accidents within a year as one of the criteria from the MUTCD to consider any intersection of having a stop sign. Both of these intersections currently have yield signs. I agree that one of these intersections definitely has some line of sight issues, but my concern is, we have a federal document that has been approved federally, approved by the state, has been adopted by the city of Elmhurst, and now we're utilizing more and more out of an article as our guideline to make these decisions, instead of using the document that has tens, twenties, I don't know, many of individuals who have engineering backgrounds who looked through this criteria and said, "This is the standard that should be utilized." But instead, we're referencing an article not only for one criteria now, but for multiple. And that's a great concern. And I would like to kind, I would like to make the request, if there's an answer, on why are we not using the MUTCD, and why are we relying and making decisions based on an article done, I think, before the 2000 era?
Okay. Alderman Healy, wish to comment?
No.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call roll.
Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Anquist, absent. Eleven ayes, one nays, two absent.
Eleven ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item 6.8 is approved. On to Agenda Item 7, Committee Reports. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council authorize the loan from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in the amount not to exceed $27,971,000 to fund wastewater capital improvement projects, signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman, Bob Dunn, Vice Chairman, Joel Toledo, and unsigned by Mark P. Sabatino.
Okay, to put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve. The report and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the report's pretty clear, but just to shed a little light on it, what the Finance Committee is basically doing is going through a process to gain council approval to make investments in the wastewater treatment plant. These are, all of these projects, most of the projects, a couple have popped on since we last looked at it, but have been on the radar of this committee as we evaluate water rates and sewer rates every year. There's a lot of projects, obviously, that need to be done. Twenty, just shy of $28 million is a huge number, but it really hasn't changed that much in the three to five years we've been looking out. And we've started looking out, we used to look out five years, we're now looking 10, because these projects don't come with small price tags, and they're important that we keep our eye on them. So basically, what city staff is asking us to do, is a council, is to give permission to bond the full amount, the 27 million, just under $28 million, in some time over the next three to five years to fund these various projects. This will signify to the IEPA who's making the loans that we're serious about these endeavors, and we're going to follow through on where it makes sense. So that's what this committee is asking you to do. It should be noted that each and every one of these projects will be reviewed by the Public Works Committee, which will then issue a report with all the actual details on a project-by-project basis. So, and it remains to be seen yet how many actual tranches we take out of for the whole total amount, or if we do it in three bigger parts. We're not exactly sure on the timing of that. If we take money that we don't use for a while, we obviously incur debt service costs that don't need to be incurred, so we'll, you know, manage it the way that we manage all the projects in a prudent and efficient manner. So that's basically, you know, what we're doing tonight, is asking for that authority by the council to bond at a low interest rate through the Illinois EPA for these projects that are required to be done at our wastewater treatment facility. The debt service for these projects will be paid by user fees. These are on the water sewer bill, and there is a, what's called a capital investment recovery charge that was instituted as part of our water rate study a few years ago. And that charge is something that fluctuates, depending on what kind of debt there is outstanding. Like any other debt, there's some rolling off, and there's new debt being issued, so it requires that we look at that on an annual basis. But that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Anquist, absent. Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 7.1 is approved. On to Agenda Item 8, 8.1. Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple things. Immediately following this meeting, we have, we will continue with our budget review. All are welcome to attend and stay. Couple other announcements. This weekend, I was very fortunate to attend a Joe Newton celebration. This was, this last weekend, boys and girls, York High School cross-country participated in their state meet, which is significant in and of itself that they qualified for the state meet. But this was officially Joe Newton's last year as head coach of the cross-country team. If you don't know Joe Newton, I don't know where you've been for the past 60 years, because that's how long he was head coach, 61 years at York High School. And I was very fortunate to be able to read a proclamation from the governor. The, in fact, there was a stack of awards about this big when we were done. So Joe got everything. He got official Joe Newton Day in Elmhurst, official Joe Newton Day in Illinois. There was, there was over 1,000 people who attended this event. It was at York High School in the Joe Newton Field House. I, I think, if you attend, and I know it's on cable, I don't know where, maybe we can post it on our website, but if you have an opportunity to watch it, I think what's interesting is, while Joe is probably most well-known for his 28 state titles, the ceremony was really about how Joe's impact on the community and the kids that he worked with over that amount of time. So it was very moving. It was appropriate. Joe deserves all the credit he gets. I'm going to miss some people here, but there was a committee that pulled this together. Rob Wagner, who was the athletic director at York High School, Charlie Kern, who was officially taking over for Joe Newton, and Mary Carol Anquest. I know are some of the, the three that I want to single out, who without them, the ceremony wouldn't have taken place. So if you have an opportunity, it's quite impressive. And Joe's in failing health, but in fantastic spirits, and at the very end of this ceremony, he actually took the microphone for about 20 minutes. So, which is, should be no surprise. As I was walking up to the microphone, as I passed him, he'd, "Get him, hell, mayor." So if you're wondering if Joe has changed, he's not changed.
I love that guy.
So we have a Veterans Day ceremony on the 11th. It's at 10:30 at Wilder Park at our memorial, what do we call that? Memorial Garden? Veterans Memorial, I'm sorry, I don't mean to trivialize it. In the past, if we've run into inclement weather, we hosted inside in the mansion, but we'll cross our fingers on that. We also have, and this is on our website, Youth Commission is hosting a gentleman by the name of Chris Heron. Chris Heron's a former NBA player who struggled with heroin addiction and is a motivational speaker and does more than that, but as I think most are aware, heroin is an issue in DuPage County, and Elmhurst is not immune from the heroin challenges that we face. This is a great event, and it goes all day long, and he tours various schools. But this was really our Commission on Youth, Jackie Tamer and her group pulling that together. So I would encourage you, if you can, to attend that. And that is, when is that? The 29th, 7 o'clock. Is that right? That's the final presentation at York High School. Clerk Spencer already mentioned the election. Two other things before I sign off here. One is, relates to our ongoing stormwater efforts and our attempts to come to an agreement with District 205. At Bryan, there's been some stuff stated publicly and in the paper, so I felt it appropriate just to provide some facts, I think, as council and the community is aware. We've been working on these projects for, I would say, going on six years now in terms of the planning. Specifically, when I took over as mayor over three years ago, I had meetings with what I'll call the Communications Committee, Shannon Ebner, John McDonough, other folks on the school board at the time, and have been discussing Bryan since then, since about three years ago. Midsummer, we received an offer, what I'll call an initial offer from the schools for, I requested use at the corner, southwest corner of Bryan Middle School. It was compensation of 1.2 million for the use of the land, for the purchase of the land. Approximately $450,000 of that would be paid with compensatory land over by our Public Works garage. But nonetheless, 1.2 million was the appraisal, then $400,000 worth of improvements at that land that, that they were proposing, and then an additional $350,000 for damage to remainder. Council approved a counteroffer just about two or three weeks ago that came out of Public Works Committee for 1.2 million cash to purchase the property. I know that the school board has discussed it, and I believe they sent a letter, Dave Moyer sent a letter to Jim Grabowski saying that school board has rejected the $1.2 million offer. There wasn't a counteroffer. I know that not only is city staff, but also other elected officials continue to keep channels open in an attempt to come to an agreement. Two other things were mentioned in conversation that I think merit being addressed. One is TIF surplus. We have a TIF won in town in our downtown business district. We extended that TIF with an agreement with the schools back in 2004 when they approached us, when they were having some financial issues, and we released some properties. There is an agreement in place that says that the city will consider surplus once our capital needs are met. Now, I normally don't read things in the paper and take them at heart, but there was a quote in the paper that the school board felt that city council was holding up our TIF surplus discussion as it relates, because we're disappointed in how far we've moved forward with Bryan. I will point out, it was two meetings ago that the school board's the one who brought it up, saying that they would not discuss our Bryan agreement until the TIF surplus was had. In addition, when there was, York High School was rebuilt, there was also a commitment for 1.2 million. In my opinion, those are things that still need to be discussed at this point. I do want to continue to work with the schools. I will say this. I'm the one who recommended public meetings a year ago, and I believe that the public meetings and what I'll call negotiating in public was very fruitful at the time. We ended up with a couple of agreements with the Park District and one with the school district. I believe that the land that we want to buy and the money that we want to use to buy it is the, it's the, it's the residents' money and it's the residents' land. So, I am in favor for public negotiations. If we were negotiating maybe a contractor to repave a street, then I have no problem with, you know, a private negotiation, but in this case, I am hoping that the school board will discuss this publicly. But they rejected the last offer. I know that we're making efforts to contact them and try to continue the conversation. Last, but not least, and this might be the first time since I've been up here, chairing the meeting, that I've ever commented to a comment at public forum. But I will state this for the record, because it's erroneous and it was a personal direction at me. I was chairman of DP&amp;Z for four years. I have been mayor and chairman of these meetings for three years. At no point during that time have I ever asked anybody to leave a meeting. Occasionally, we will have what I will call ceremonial procedures at the beginning of our meetings, whether it's with Boy Scouts, or swearing in police officers, or swearing in firefighters. And a lot of times, we will fill the room with folks who are interested in that, but then want to leave afterwards. So, as I always do, and as I will continue to do when we have situations like that, I will give those folks an opportunity to leave if they should choose and not interrupt our meeting. So, to be clear, I have never asked anybody to leave a meeting I've been chair of since I've been an elected official. And that's my report. City Manager Grabowski.
Nothing tonight, just anxious to get to the budget.
Okay. Budget meeting immediately following. Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up question, maybe to City Manager Grabowski, possibly to Chairman Kennedy. One of the particular issues that the school board has addressed or raised, specific to the York High School fee in lieu of the 1.2 million, I've read board notes, I've read comments in the paper, that they feel they don't owe that money, that they disagree that they owe that money. And it's my understanding that that fee in lieu of stems from their 2001 York High School remodel. So, if, if that's the case, and I believe it is, the county, the county, DuPage County, passed their stormwater mitigation ordinance in 1991. They've, they've changed it a few times since, but the ordinance itself has been in effect since 1991. So, obviously, when York rebuilt the high school in 2001, they would have been held to the county stormwater ordinance. So, my question is, have we asked the school board that if they in fact dispute that they owe the $1.2 million fee in lieu of, if they dispute that, have we ever asked them for their stormwater mitigation plan from 2001? Because it's my opinion, it's my belief, that if they didn't or haven't provided stormwater mitigation at York from when they added on to the high school in 2001, then clearly they would owe a fee in lieu of. So, do we, A, do we know the answer to that question? And if we don't, can we ask the school board about that? If, if they can produce the plan that they implemented in 2001, then I understand the argument. But if they don't have a plan or they didn't mitigate, I think that's, I think that's something that needs to be discussed. Coincidentally, and I know Public Works is aware of this, maybe some others are too, almost the exact amount of water that we need to mitigate at York is what they would have had to account for in 2001, according to the Burke Report. I don't remember the fees, or the 1.3 acre feet, some, somewhere around. Somebody will correct me on it, but it's, it's almost exact amount that had they mitigated for it in 2001, the residents adjacent to York would not have, potentially do not have that flooding, the flooding problems that they have now. So, long-winded statement, there is a question buried in there. Do we know how York, District 205 York High School, was going to mitigate for stormwater in 2001?
Well, I would, let me state this. I don't know if there is a stormwater plan for that specifically. I can tell you that at the time, it was about, I'm going to say, when they were building their building, it was about 8.4 acre feet, give or take. And I think that there is, they have a little stormwater storage on that front soccer field. It's about 0.4 acre feet. So, I think the end result is, there's, there's an, according to the reports at the time, there's about an eight acre foot of impact that needed to be compensated for when they built, and it's about the same in the Burke Report. It's about eight acre feet. In terms of whether they have a plan or not, I don't know.
I've not seen a plan. What I have seen is the variation application that was processed for the fee in lieu. So, I've not seen a stormwater mitigation plan.
Sure.
So, if, if they applied for a variation in, for fee in lieu of, that's an indication that they intended to pay the fee in lieu of, so that that money then could be put back into stormwater mitigation efforts, right? I mean, that...
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Paulman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that is the first word, issue. Residents have raised this multiple times, so I do have a few of the background pieces that I'll share, just so that everyone up here has them. Under the county ordinance that Alderman Healy mentioned, the addition at the high school that was completed in 2003 triggered a requirement of 9.5 acre feet of stormwater detention. They applied for a variance to that requirement. What they put forth in their application is that they had the ability to provide 0.7 acre feet on-site, which is what exists now, and they asked for the variance so that they could choose the payment in lieu option for 8.8 acre feet of the stormwater that they were not able to meet on-site. So, if you calculate that out, it ends up, it's $133,000 per acre foot that's not provided on-site. That ends up at $1.17 million as their payment in lieu. So, the 8.8 acre feet was the amount that they asked for relief, for variance. And the Burke Report is asking for, and has identified, that if we could put eight acre feet of stormwater, if we could store that in front of the high school, that would address the flooding needs in the area immediately west and north of the high school. So, you know, I don't think that there has been a direct connection made, that the high school itself and the addition is causing the flooding, but I go to if there were 9.5 acre feet that had been provided on-site, I don't think we would have a Burke Report that's identifying a project to get eight acre feet. So, I, I do believe there's an unmet obligation related to the addition of the high school, how that connects directly to the conversation around Bryan or future projects. I think that's all for discussion.
Okay. One second. I, I lost my place. Are we on your report? Or you had no report, we're just doing comments right now. I got it. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to provide a quick debrief on the ONCC meeting I participated in last Friday, the 4th, the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission meeting. Some statistics from September, the 4R runway that impacts Elmhurst, especially in terms of arrivals in the evening, which I think is where we're getting most of our calls. We had 6% of the flights during the evening hours in September were utilizing that runway in, 6%. And a couple other items. There's a House Bill 5917 that's in the Rules Committee right now. It proposes to provide an income tax credit for the purchase and installation of sound insulation materials in, in a home if you are in an over 65 DNL area. And the public can, as they can with any House bill, provide input into that bill online on the state site. Last item I want to touch on is the Fly Quiet program, which was one of the main reasons we really jumped into the ONCC. They, that is winding down. It's due to finish in mid to late December, the 25-week program. And the question is now, will that continue? Bensonville has formally requested an extension to it, as have some other communities. There is a meeting of the ad hoc committee, the Fly Quiet Ad Hoc Committee, on Wednesday, November 30th, at the Chicago Department of Aviation Office at 9:00 a.m. to, to discuss that and next steps. But what was really put forward in the meeting was it's a, it's a regulatory issue, that program needs to run its course, and then the, the ONCC would vote on that in the January meeting, and they would need a majority of membership to pass that, to continue the Fly Quiet rotation program. That would put a recommendation forward to the Chicago Department of Aviation to review and then move that forward to the FAA for implementation. So, that's what's up next for that particular program. And just another note, there were some communities that had mentioned Park Ridge, Schiller Park, Arlington Heights being a few of them, that they've received some lower assessments for their homes because they were in a, a area that was prone to runway noise, airplane noise. So, some of our neighboring communities have been, have been impacted by the O'Hare noise a great deal, and it's actually lowered some of their property values. So, that's all I have to report. If anyone has any questions.
Okay. As a follow-up to that, Alderman Dunn, I'll mention that, as council's aware, the city's been pulling together information to provide to council and the public about Fly Quiet, among other things, and our current update. And in doing so, we contacted the CDA for some information, and ultimately resulted in a meeting, which we're going to be attending. We haven't finalized it yet in the next couple of weeks. But I think it makes sense to get their input, direct from the horse's mouth, so to speak, before we come and present to council what we think the CDA is going to do. So, we were fortunate enough in trying to gather information, get a meeting from them. We don't have a lot of feedback yet on that meeting, except to say that, like I said, we're going to hear it straight from them when we have that meeting. That's in the next couple of weeks. So, Alderman Bram.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, you touched on it before I could. Thank you, City Manager Grabowski, for sending out that email today about the presentation that was planned for today, that, you know, we have been able to reach Chicago Department of Aviation, and it will be upcoming. I look forward to a date certain, hopefully soon on that. I do have a question on some of the comments that Alderman Dunn just made in regards to Fly Quiet and the possible expansion of duration of Fly Quiet and the ONCC, which, if I'm correct, I thought that was the Noise Compatibility Commission, voting on if there should be an extension of that program. If I can request some clarification on if I'm correct on that acronym, that it's the Noise Compatibility Commission, why would they be the ones, why would they be the determining factor on if that program continues or not? And then the other question, and this might be for the city manager or mayor, but where is our input alongside of should we continue Fly Quiet? Should we want this setup to continue on long-term?
I'm sorry to understand that last question. Where is our input?
How are we communicating our concerns over this program to the appropriate entities? I'm concerned from the standpoint of the comments that were made, that ONCC is the one who's voting on if this should, what I call Share the Noise Program should continue. You know, are we at the table strong enough at ONCC or externally to say, you know, we don't want it to continue? Or what are the data points that are saying that it should or should not continue?
You want to address the extension? Who sets Fly Quiet? And if it was going to be extended, it's the ONCC who makes the recommendation, but FAA is the one who makes the call.
That's my understanding. Alderman Dunn, I believe that's what you just said, is definitely ONCC makes the recommendation and to CDA and FAA, and ultimately, I think it's FAA that makes the call on Fly Quiet.
Sure. The, the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission, the ONCC, is the body that is, is under the CDA, the Chicago Department of Aviation. This program came out of the ONCC, a particular committee that was set up within it to examine this issue. They came up with this program, and the way the, those bodies are structured, they make a recommendation to their overseeing body, the CDA, who then in turn communicates that to the FAA. That's generally how that channel of approval would work.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. I didn't clarify the question on why ONCC would be that, the one to make the recommendation, but I guess where I'm coming from on this issue is I think we as a city have done a good job at getting a seat at the table to listen, to gather data, but I think before it's too late, we need to do that next step. And that next step is, and I believe there's a consensus from the whole city council, but I'll just speak for myself and my constituency at this point, is that we are not for Fly Quiet. It's disruptive, it's worse than what we had before, we don't want to see an extension. So, what are we doing, or what steps do we need to do, if we're not already, to send that message to the appropriate...
It's disruptive, it's worse than what we had before, we don't want to see an extension. So what are we doing or what steps do we need to do if we're not already to send that message to the appropriate governing bodies? Be it ONCC, be it CDA, be it FAA, whoever those individuals are, I think we need to, you know, continue with the listening, continue with the data collection, but start making noise on our own behalf and saying, we're not happy with this.
And City of Elmhurst is on record with the ONC and with SOC and with DuPage Mayors and Managers that we oppose Fly Quiet. I have actually drafted a letter reemphasizing that, even though I've stated it half a dozen times in public and we've stated it at these meetings that we're against it. I have drafted that letter sitting on my desk, formally opposing this. I have chosen to put that letter on hold until I have this meeting with the Chicago Aviation Association. So we're on record, at every meeting we go on record. I, I oppose this Fly Quiet. It was surprising that my last DuPage Mayors and Managers meeting, even folks that are supposed to benefit from Fly Quiet, some of the east and west towns have noticed that when they're in the Fly Quiet rotation, I don't think it's anecdotal, for whatever reason, it seems like the planes either are taking off lower or taking longer to climb or what have you. There just seems to be an increased level of noise and a noticeable difference in the path of the airplane. So we're on record numerous times, I plan on going to record, but I thought sending the letter that I had drafted would be premature, once the Chicago Aviation Association decided, offered to me. Department, sorry, department. Alderman Mulliner.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands one thing that Alderman Dunn said. He said that there's a bill in Springfield allowing people to hold back their income tax or get an income tax credit for soundproofing. This is a Chicago problem. Chicago is collecting all of the fees for the airport and they're offsetting that to the citizens of the state of Illinois. When the program was done in the past, and the program was done in the past, the City of Chicago took some money aside and said, we will soundproof those homes for you, and they put the money aside. It did not come from the state. It came from the Aviation Department of the City of Chicago. And I would be very concerned if we're now going to offset that to the state of Illinois and all the residents of the state of Illinois. I think it belongs in Chicago and I think we need to voice that concern and make sure that they know it's their responsibility.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to other business. Sorry. Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight on the consent agenda, the council approved the report for a preferred concept for a metro station. So the next step is that CDM Smith will take this direction of the report and come up with two renderings for a preferred concept and host another public meeting on Wednesday, November 30th at 7:00 PM. The proposal will be presented and feedback will be gathered and that will be used, or may be used, to refine the stage one, or phase one plans, which will be used for a grant application for CMAC. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements or reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to other business. Any other business? No other business. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, we're going to take a five-minute break after this meeting and then we will get started with our committee to hold a continuance budget discussion. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.